Oh, this is.
But I just, that had no tone of truth.
That's all right. I memorized these guys.
As we all do.
You can share it too, Stephen.
Yeah, I'm fine with this. I just didn't want to steal his nose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Will, good evening. Welcome to the special meeting of the Ellsworth City Council. The second item on the agenda is public hearing in action on the courthouse location. What we're going to do tonight in order, so everybody knows that this is how we're going to handle this, Charlie's going to give an overview of where the city is and what our different options are. We're going to allow the council to talk about those options first, and then we'll open up a public hearing so people can comment on this item only. All right? Charlie?
Well, thank you very much, Chair Beal, and to the council on our, this is our fifth kind of formal conversation on the alternative Ellsworth courthouse proposal and location. It's, I wanted to start off by thanking the city council for the incredible amount of time dedicated to this effort, as well as the community who, you know, I would include a sixth that was at the original, at the courthouse, that meeting as well. And I've, you know, we've, it's, there have been some spirited discussions, I could say, but really informative ones, too. I think for myself, it's, one of the things I love working in Ellsworth is access to this type of an informed, engaged citizenry in council and staff. And the state judiciary are, you know, our partners in the DEP, the Maine DOT. This really felt like a team effort, and a lot of folks that really understood the impact of this decision, you know, for the city of Ellsworth, and especially the state judiciary, who kind of every step of this process has been helpful and responsive to feedback and questions from myself and the city. I'm happy to report that they have reviewed our due diligence on the surveys from the Wardwell property, the engineering, environmental surveys. We've had conversations with DEP, Maine DOT, and of course, nothing's final until you go through the full processes, whether it's at the Wardwell property or the Surrey property. But they feel comfortable with the due diligence done on the alternative location, and that would be an excellent place for the new Hancock County Maine Judicial Center. And so tonight, we kind of have three options before us. We can move forward with the alternative proposal, and I'll talk a little bit more about the pros and cons on that proposal now that it's been finalized. We can take no action, which is to effectively allow the state to move forward on building the courthouse at the Surrey Road locations as previously planned by the state. Or if it's the council's will to, and they aren't comfortable with the Wardwell property, aren't comfortable with the Surrey property, they could pursue a moratorium on courthouses in Ellsworth. See, the first two options are ones that I recommend, the first one more than the second. The third one, I don't necessarily recommend, but if, you know, I do believe that a moratorium or forestalling the state from building this courthouse, we are the most need in Ellsworth, everybody agrees on that, is not a, let's kick the can down the road, a six months, a year kind of determination. That's potentially a decade before we're back on the list for courthouses here in Ellsworth. I really feel, whether it's the Wardwell property or whether it's the Surrey property, that we need to move forward. This is an enormous investment in the future that's a desperate need for the people that use that courthouse every single day. I know it's a momentous decision, one that could be 100, or in the case of the old courthouse, 140, 130 years' decision. I know I've been thinking a lot about the history and the impact of that. I did some research into the old courthouse, because I was thinking, you know, it was across the river once. It's now courthouse design gallery, and I didn't realize that it, it was interesting, the history of that is, you know, it came, came about, I think, in the 1830s. It's 1834. It was, became the Ellsworth Town Hall. That actually was the first piece to go there. So they built the town hall, and then in '37 or '38, when the, when the city became the county seat, stole it from Castine, where I live, probably the right place, though. They, the county needed a courthouse here. So there's kind of an interesting, long history of the city and the county, you know, kind of partnering on the buildings. They're also significant, I think, in sort of the history, the economic history of Ellsworth. You know, there was a lot more activity on that side of the river during the 1830s. And as the growth of the business district on this side of the river moved forward, the courthouse moves over here, the city hall moves over here. And to me, this next decision, in a lot of ways, is about, you know, are we going to go literally back across the river with the courthouse? Or are we going to move forward into Ellsworth's next really big growth area? I don't think a lot of the founders of Ellsworth or, you know, really ever imagined four million people coming to Acadia National Park to hike in the woods in cars, but that's become another big growth area for the city. And especially, I rereviewed, which is in the packet, and it's online for folks that would like to see it, our recently approved comprehensive plan, the recently drafted housing needs assessment. And there's just so much in there on the need to build in our urban core, which the Wardwell property sits firmly inside of the urban core, and not to, and not to encourage sprawl, and, and to really, and very specific mentions of building additional infrastructure, water, sewer, making development costs cheaper, really encouraging, you know, more higher density development in this area. To me, it kind of speaks towards if we didn't have a courthouse project anchoring additional access into our urban core, you know, following the release of the comp plan and our housing needs assessment, like, we're going to need to start thinking about how we help with those infrastructure pieces as well to develop our urban core. So with that, I'm going to go, a lot of this, you know, especially this is four or five meetings, I don't want to bog you down with information I've already given about the courthouse. I know some folks might be listening to this for the first time, but there is a ton of information on ellsworthmain.gov/courthouse, which has, I think, three or four of the presentations that we've done. It has the Surrey Road information from the state that they provided with their schematics, and an FAQ for that. It includes tonight's presentation, additional memos on the three options. But I'll just go a little bit into some of the newer information for you all. We talked about the options for consideration. The, one of the bigger things is we have, shoot. Trying to get the scale right on this. So this is the, the final survey of the potential land swap on the Wardwell property for 17.9 acres, which would really be the anchoring of this land swap agreement with the state, where the, the ward, the, the city would enter into agreement to swap the 17, or facilitate the swap of this 17.9 acre parcel for the state's 17.9 acre parcel on the Surrey Road. One of the reasons for the timeliness of this and a lot of the flurry of activity that's happened over the last four months to really bring this option to the table is the state has a bond council deadline on the 15th that they really need to make a decision on whether to keep the Surrey Road property or to swap it for an alternative, or that that option doesn't exist anymore. It's the Surrey Road piece, or if we issue a moratorium. So really, next Wednesday, I think, is the 15th. That's when this potential for this swap expires. So there was a lot of due diligence from our last meeting to this one. You can see the, this is the potential road that would access the courthouse area, the initial schematics of where the courthouse could potentially be built. Each of these little dots represents a test, a soil test pit that was taken to, to analyze suitability of the road, to analyze suitability of building such a significant structure in this area. And those all came back positive. I know a lot of ways that, you know, there's a full geotechnical report is in this packet. I won't read every, every sentence of it, but a courthouse definitely can be built here. It's, you know, there is, it was sort of designed in the road schematics, and we've been working with some of our local engineers and surveyors. Andrew and Steve are here today to really build upon their expertise, but we've talked to the landowners, the Merrills and the Adams. They're amenable to easement purchases on these areas in this general vicinity. But a lot of the reasons for the road to look like this is based on these potential vernal pools, these kind of circular areas around the dot, which have 250-foot setbacks. We've had conversations with the DEP, and really, this road is designed to, if they were to find in the spring that these vernal pools were to be significant, that this road is designed to, to go through less than 25% of, and, and the courthouse site itself, of either these two full 250-foot setbacks, which would allow us to be basically permitted within a rule. So, you know, essentially, if the DEP throws the buck at us, and we have to, like, this is the least environmentally, even if those are vernal pools of significance. However, if they weren't vernal pools of significance in the spring, there might be an argument to reanalyze the road, to move straight through the middle and, you know, and keep more land for development over here of a better access point. But we can, we can work on contingencies in the road finalization. This probably wouldn't be built until 2027 to kind of finalize what the exact easement purchase would be, and what the final kind of road layout would be. Also, the, the final road kind of exit, you know, the Wardwells who own this property, but an entire, I think, 140-acre stretch between High Street and Main Street, you know, not just access to the courthouse for this road, but I think that one of the, the comp plan and the, the housing needs assessment are just the need to develop further into our urban core where this resides, that we would probably want to specify a contingency with the state's finalization of this agreement, that there'd be some sort of access, once the, once the final site for the courthouse is located within this parcel, on how the road would egress into the, into the remaining properties. Should also note that the Merrill, or the Wardwells have, you know, offered a rights of first refusal for a period of time on their entire acreage of this property, so that, not just for this courthouse, which they've been very amenable to, but as the city thinks about the full potential use of this, these properties to develop in our urban core, and, you know, and as we've seen in properties just nearby, that there's a, you know, real need for development in this area, and to do it, and smartly to do it, you know, that's, that's a different kind of project, I think. I think this would be the first step that would allow us to move forward on those other pieces. But in addition to, you know, offering an easement for a parking area so that we can have Ellsworth's first parking, public parking access to the rail trail, which currently doesn't exist, and I think is sort of an untapped asset. One of the other big untapped assets is the Cardbrook area itself. I think, I know, when the first time when I walked this, it was, you know, it was pretty dramatic to go from the, you know, heavily developed High Street corridor to this Cardbrook area, and there's pictures in this presentation on just how special of a place that this is, and also not necessarily accessible by the public as of yet. The state's interested in, as part of this agreement, to potentially give us a public access to the Cardbrook area. I mean, this really feels like the right-sized development for the courthouse, but to also keep this, you know, the majority of this, I think it's the 17.9 acres, you know, wild, and, and not, you know, there are as many of these areas outside of these kind of striped lines, this is the wetlands area, you know, this, for a potential housing project, could be all developed. Pretty close to Cardbrook, I think, if you look at the Acadia Village development that's across Cardbrook, like, it's, it's right there. So this really feels like not just the right development for, for the courthouse for the next 100, 150 years, but also just this area, and to really, to have some additional value adds to this piece. That is, let me see, the, there's a bunch more surveys in here, and most of them are really more, more used for technical folks. You know, we have the full environmental surveys as well, outlines the trails, property pictures. Sorry, zoom in. I'm sorry with the computer. I also included a lot of excerpts from the comprehensive plan in the needs assessment about developing our urban core, which comes up again and again and again, the need to look for affordable housing development and making it cheaper for developers, and increasing our, our infrastructure in just this area, and to avoid sprawl, and to avoid a lot of what's happening now, where it's easier for developers to go outside of our urban core, and, you know, and sort of, whereas if we're really looking for the future of the city, and we saw a 7% decline in enrollment with our schools over the last few years, like, and we all know this in Ellsworth, with some of this spillover from Acadia, and Airbnbs, you know, how do we, how do we build the next generation for Ellsworth for year-round residents? I do feel like, you know, developing here, a plan to kind of bring a road and additional infrastructure in here is going to pay it off many times over for the future citizens of Ellsworth. And, you know, I originally started with the comprehensive plan, with, Matt did a great job on presenting, and, you know, I reread it over the weekend, and I was just kind of taken aback by, wow, like, if we weren't doing this courthouse, we would want to find something like it to anchor and move into this area to do what the comp plan and the needs assessment asks us to do. On that, kind of the urban zone piece, this is sort of the courthouse area. There's another parcel that goes up here. This is in the rural zone. You know, I could see in a future analysis that we could consider this maybe an urban zone or rezone this. If the road were to come into here, off the lighted entrance, off Long Lane, you know, potentially over time, I wouldn't be part of this project, but I'd want to, especially with the rights of first refusal on how to develop this whole area, potentially bringing a road all the way through, and, and really, you know, redesigning our TIF districts to really concentrate on affordable housing, and a lot of the other parts of the housing needs assessment and comp plan about how do we make it easier for developers to know that this is the type of thing the city wants, and kind of prepackaged plans for the development in here has a very high success chance of coming through our planning boards, and never a guarantee, but to make it easier for them. There's a full kind of satellite survey for those that don't just like the color piece. That would be the kind of potential size of the courthouse here, with the road running up from Merrill Lane and then over. You can see the rail trail in Cardbrook. Actually, I want to, there's supposed to be one of the...
Is this on the city's website? I'm sorry.
Yes, ellsworthmain.gov/courthouse.
Thank you.
Yep. There's just one last picture I wanted to, here we go, the future land use map. This is in the comp plan, I believe. And it kind of goes to this point of, between the, you know, the... So the, so the urban zone, which is where the courthouse, and then this, this would be kind of the Surrey Road area in the neighborhood zone. So, you know, in some ways, there's, like, from a comp planning, from a long-term planning perspective, like, this seems like the more appropriate place for the Wardwell property for a courthouse of this size and magnitude, and that can really kind of set to be an anchor for further development into this area in our urban core. Some of the other pieces, you know, I, there's a motion potential here in the packet on moving forward, if we were to move forward with the Wardwell property, to authorize the city manager to facilitate the land swap, to negotiate the easement purchases with the Adams and Merrill, property owners, to enter into a contract with the state of Maine judicial branch relative to the building of a city road timeline, standards, and the obligation to ban or bond for funds that the city does not acquire through other means, but also instructing the city manager to actively pursue state, federal, and other funding opportunities to reduce the financial burden of the city for the road development. That it could include impact fees. We talked about some zoning modification, development fees. The, we recently talked to, there could be some conservation potential here that I know a few, a few folks are interested in that could help mitigate the funding of the road costs. And there's, I talked to Senator Grahowski today. She'd be more than happy to put a state, a bill to the state requesting funding for this road to the courthouse. As well, it's not a guarantee that we will get the funding, but she would be happy to move forward with that. And then I, if we were to move forward as well, I think the second piece would be to, for me to reach out to Maine DOT. We've talked about, we don't think this would qualify for this piece of the road for municipal partnership initiative, however, or an MPI, as they call them. However, the, the redoing High Street this spring, which is kind of a good time to do an anchor into High Street, which this, this would be, and there, there may be an opportunity to do an MPI to upgrade that intersection for a much more substantial piece. And the MPI could be a cost-share match with Maine DOT, at least at the intersection area as well. And so, also, I've, I know there was some question last time around at the meeting on to whether our, the, the costs could be defrayed from our public works department, whether they have kind of the expertise to do road building of this type. The answer is undoubtedly yes. We have some of the most technically skilled folks in the business here. A lot of them come from local Ellsworth road builders like R.F. Jordan and others. I know we have three of them here today. I was talking with, with Brian recently, and our highway foreman, and, you know, like, we can, we have the wastewater, our water teams, our road crews, we can, you know, pay for the pipe and lay this pipe, and the wastewater, the sewer, you know, we can't do the electrical. We've worked with our engineer on every little piece, gravel and screening, you know, land clearing, grubbing. There's a variety of things that our public works team, when they're not on, on some of their other priority projects, could really allocate a lot of time, and I think passion and expertise for these projects. I know, talking to Nate, who has, you know, helped build Myrick Street, and, you know, and built, you know, the, gosh, I think he had a whole list of them. Last time around, I think he mentioned, he's like, he's pretty much built every road here in Ellsworth, and, you know, he did a good portion of Norton Park. This is, these are very technically skilled folks that are passionate about roads. They're road plowing, you know, every single square inch of this place that they're allowed to do. Every winner, they care about this place. They, I think they could significantly reduce that cost as well. So very, very happy with that team, and, and I know they're excited about this project as well. Now, that being said, that, you know, if the city doesn't, the city council doesn't want to move forward with, moving forward with the Wardwell property, the next option, and there's more information from the state, again, it's on the website. You've seen it before on the Surrey Road project, and that location, they have an FAQ for what the, the benefits of, of that parcel. And, you know, and that, from that point forward, you know, this, obviously, we'll stay involved, and just like any other developer in the area, we'll, you know, bring them through the planning board process. They've promised to go through that planning board process. There's some question of legally whether it's required for the state, but they have promised, and I, I believe that they would make that, or they would meet that promise. So we would, you know, definitely, there'd be no immediate sort of financial investment from the city, which would be an advantage of the Surrey Road piece, obviously simplify some of the decision-making and the time-making processes from the city's perspective. And, you know, and we, from that point forward, we just kind of ensure that the state adheres to local planning environmental regulations, monitor progress, and, you know, provide necessary kind of city updates to folks' new, you know, timelines for the Surrey Road project, et cetera. And then there's the third option, which, if the council isn't comfortable with moving forward with the Wardwell property option, or the Surrey Road option, we could pursue a moratorium on the courthouse, or moratorium on developments of this type in Ellsworth for a period of time to, to look into additional options. The, you know, we, we do have our city attorney as well, our city planner here, who've been looking into that and put together a memo in this, in this proposal with more information there. But they're happy to talk to it if the council or the community has some questions for them. But I do feel like this is sort of the non-recommended option for me. I did want you all to have that option, so that it's, you know, you have the Wardwell, we have the Surrey, and we have a, we don't want either of those two, but we'd kind of like to kick the can down the road option as well. But I, I'm fairly certain that that's, that's a decades, that's a decades-long decision before the state will reconsider Ellsworth. It kind of puts us to the back of the list for this potential. It's not 100%, you know. Regardless of that, I'll fight, fight tooth and nail if we don't do Surrey, we don't do Wardwell. I won't give up on what they've already, you know, the state is already obligated in bond funding for 55 billion, but it's going to be a real hard road, you know, after this process and the state's amenable to here, if we don't move forward on either project, probably to get that to happen. So with that, I'll pause and open it up to council questions. I know we have some of our experts from the roads groups here. We also have our city attorney and city planner and myself, and happy to answer questions from council, and then I believe chair, then we'll go to the public.
First, I'd like to say thank you very, very much. The amount of work that you've done over the last several months, the information you've been able to, to bring to us, the communication with the judiciary, with the, with the people, the citizens of Ellsworth, and the communication and having everything out there in transparency, I just commend you. You've done an excellent, excellent job. So if people don't know about this and don't have the information, it's just not our fault, but it's not your fault, I should say. You've done a great job. So thank you.
Thank you.
Does council have any questions, comments?
Just one clarifying question. Did you say the construction of the road, if we own the Wardwell site, would not begin until or before 2027?
No, it would likely begin in 2026, following kind of final DE pyramids, final surveying, final analysis. The construction road, which, you know, is really a gravel sort of road off the Long Lane piece, you know, would begin as soon as projects are approved. But that's a much easier, you know, our, our public works team can cover that piece in its entirety. We wouldn't need to, to go out to private contracting for that piece. So probably, you know, let's say all things move forward, you know, it could be by the end of this, that we're doing the construction road piece, but I wouldn't be able to give that level of timeline detail until later. I should also note that if we move forward on this with the construction road timelines, project planning, and financing as well, like, there'd be, be giving a quarterly update on this project. It's so significant. And, you know, we'd, we'd want to make sure that we're very transparent exactly in how the road's getting built and updates and progress. I think anybody who knows me in here is very much value transparency, especially about budgeting, especially about big items like this. And essentially, the courthouse, or ellsworthmain.gov/courthouse will become a much longer and more document-filled area of the website.
Thank you. That, just that timeline was important. You were outlining a couple of different options that would impact the cost of the road to get into the courthouse at that property. So knowing that 2026 is the likely timeline, that may give us, that would give us time to look at some of those other options is an important piece. Thanks.
Any other concepts?
If you could just make sure I'm understanding, because we've had a bunch of these meetings, and we've had smaller meetings as well. And I think that a lot of this conversation at some point will take a turn toward the key points, which are, we like where, we like the possibility where it could go, but we don't like the cost to get it there. And so I think the price tag is going to come up a number of times. From what I recall, there would be a land swap for $1. Most of the cost would go into building the road and some easements. The easements might be $1,000 to $200,000. Some of that may be reimbursed from the state, because they wouldn't have to pay to put water in like they would on Surrey roads. That might get maybe $100,000, $200,000 back. The cost of the road could go as high as 1.2, 1.5 maybe, and that would sort of encompass the, the price tag that we'd be looking at for option number one.
Correct. The 1.5, which is mentioned here for bond band funding, is the total liability to the city of a totally privately funded road at, you know, at this level of extent. And that's, that's based on our engineer, our public works teams, surveyors, you know, who do this kind of work all the time to give construction companies this knowledge. You know, I, we have, and like, happy to bring, if you feel like you need that level of detail from Andrew now, too, on how that was estimated at. I have, you know, each, down to each yards of this for gravel and for, for all, every, there's probably 35, 40 components in there. So, and you're right on the credit for the state. So, and you're right on the credit for the state, which another nice thing about this, there would be at least in the near term, there's already, you know, potentially around $100,000 from what they were going to do to upgrade the Surrey Water and Sewer Stations for that could be credited back to the road. You know, the, there's the, the variety of other funding mechanisms that we'll be looking into on this, on this parcel. As previously mentioned, the impact fees from building the road from future developments and also future tax growth and revenue in this area. You know, we did the math last time around on the Beals Avenue project, 14-point-some million dollar project, which is a stone's throw away from this and the, you know, the $22 million, 150 apartment complex on the other side of Carters Brook, which you can see in all the pictures here, near Acadia Village Resort. And, you know, those are about $100,000 a year in taxes, between 100 and 150 for, to 200 for the others. So that's the kind of future growth also in this area would, would drive plus rate pairs on our water and sewer system. That's mentioned in the comp plan and the housing needs assessment is the need to make sure that we're building in our course, that we're adding, you know, those larger type developments into our water and sewer systems to help not just on the tax side of things, but on the rate payer side of things as well.
Anything else?
Yeah. Again, thank you, Charlie, for all the hard work you and I know a lot of staff at the city have done and councillors on this. You know, the, this issue of the courthouse kind of, I think we have an opportunity to make, take lemons and turn them into lemonade here. It's, you know, my opinion is that the right place of this courthouse is on the Wardwell property, the alternative site we're discussing. Just looking at, comparing the locations between Surrey and off of High Street alone, the Wardwell property is the appropriate place to put this generational development for Ellsworth. This is, you know, how old is the old, you know, you said?
Yeah, the 1880s, something for the...
So long after we're all gone, there's going to be a courthouse in Ellsworth and, you know, we have a decision to make on where that goes. And I don't want to retreat back over the river. You know, I think Ellsworth's, you know, history is, you know, our development, our urban core has moved east and this is the appropriate place to put a much needed courthouse. So that alone, I think, even if the city were to have to pay the whole 1.5 million dollars, I think that's a good investment on the city's behalf. We know between the Public Works Department's ability to do a lot of this work, even if it were still on, all on the city's dime, we're going to be reducing that 1.5 million dollar cost. Plus I know we have, you know, it sounds like we have a fair amount of time to be seeking other funding sources to continue to reduce that cost. So my opinion that it's worth that investment alone because this is the appropriate place to put the courthouse. But on top of that, this is an opportunity to do exactly what you said, Charlie, that it's, we have, our comprehensive plan is telling us that we need to develop our urban core and our housing assessment needs study is telling us, we, you know, and what we all know is how bad we need housing. And this anchored development on this site that's perfect for, you know, the urban core development, this is a huge opportunity for the city. So even if the courthouse issue wasn't on the table, we're just talking about developing and what the city needs, this is an opportunity, this is the type of development that Ellsworth needs. So putting the two together, I think it's a huge opportunity for us. So I will be voting tonight to support the Wardwell property location. And then on top of that, I think it's great, you know, Car Brook, you know, just looking at this picture, people have been there, it's a beautiful, you know, important natural resource that we have in this community. And if we do it right, we can have some conservation, we can have recreation opportunities and all that goes towards, you know, a better and, you know, a better Ellsworth. So I really do appreciate all the work you and the city staff and the councillors have done, and I think this is a great opportunity for Ellsworth.
Thank you.
Anyone else before I open the public hearing? I'm going to open the public hearing. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And also if you limit your comments to this topic only, this isn't public comments, this is, this isn't citizen comments, it's public comments and it's pertaining to this item alone. So with that, I'll open the public hearing. If you would come on up and please state your name. That's okay. Can you state your name and?
Robert Grant.
When you get up to the podium, so people can hear you.
Robert Grant, taxpayers of the city of Ellsworth. It's all great. It's a fantasy, it's all great, but how can you sit there and say you can vote for something when you don't know the cost? None of the cost. Nobody has told me one, one bit of the cost for this. There's no, there's no price tag for the, for the taxpayers of Ellsworth. There's no price tag. Nobody said it. You, you're in favor of it. You tell me what the, how much my tax is going to go up?
The price is 1.5 million dollars at most.
At most? You're sure of that?
As best we know right now.
As best we know right now. I'm not convinced, okay? This, the wetlands. I have known the piece of wetlands on the other side of that and I fought the city for 15 years, 10 years, because the state said there was high-value wetlands, so we took it, my development rights away, 250 feet all the way around my property up there on the other side of this, right here. So they took it away. They said, no, you can't develop with the dry land, 250 feet, can't develop it. But now you're saying we can go right up to it. Where's that coming from? Who made that decision?
So if you'd, if you'd like, if you want those, that answer, we can, I have, we have two people that can answer that question and give some information.
Are you going to give me my development rights back too as well?
No.
No.
But anyway, that has nothing to do with this. Your development has nothing to do with this and we can answer your question if you'd like. We can tell you why we're...
Who wants to answer?
Sure. Is Steve here?
Steve's here. I'm happy to, you know, we just had some conversations about this. The, you know, if you want the actual cost breakdown of how this 1.5 comes together and eight-inch water main, including hydrants, $167 per linear foot, it's about $200,000, $400,000. Eight-inch SCH 35 sewer, including manholes, about $130 per linear foot, $156,000. Road construction with stormwater, about $585 per linear foot for $702,000. It's clearing, grubbing, traffic evacuation, gravel, gravel base.
I don't think that's what he's asking, Charlie. I think what he's asking is...
Why does the city of Ellsworth taxpayers, property taxpayers, have to pay for this project? That's what I want to know. Shouldn't have to pay anything.
And as expressed in this, you know, in this presentation...
That's, that's my...
Just let him finish, okay? You asked the question, let him finish.
We had this conversation previously, but I'm happy to have it again. You know, this is the full, as you requested, the full financial liability if there was zero, the zero external funding sources for this road to be constructed, as Patrick said, is 1.5 billion. That's what, you know, our surveyors and engineers who work with road constructions in this area and in this county and in this state, you know, quite frequently, that's what it would be if no further involvement. We want just the taxpayer, to Patrick's point on, this is an incredible investment in the future of Ellsworth. It's going to open up a lot of development potential that's asked for by our comp plan, that's asked for by our housing needs assessment. That is the full financial liability and it's not pie in the sky, that's not randomly come about, that is after multiple, multiple meetings with Andrew and Steve to develop a good estimate that would be the benchmark for where we're at. We will be under that estimate. We have, you know, we've talked about the credit from the city or from the state on their piece of it. We've talked about, we're going to continue to go towards state funding for this project, either in the near term, but also as the full road funding project. We talked about the impact in development fees. Take Myrick Street as an example. Michelle, I know you and Tammy can probably name three or four other times the city has engaged in a public works piece that's really going to benefit the citizens and the future of Ellsworth. I think it's, this one is a .22 mile road to get into this area, to get the courthouse where we want it. And also I think it's really important to consider what the alternatives are on the table for this incredibly important monumental historic decision for the city on to move forward with this for the guarantee that we'll build the road into the site, but also that, you know, the alternative is the Surrey Road location and that's also for the council to decide. I really, you know, I'm happy for these comments from you. I think, as I've mentioned here, and that doesn't make me terribly popular with probably a lot of folks that don't want, that don't want this on the Surrey Road, I am also okay with the state moving forward to build the Surrey Road and, you know, which has no cost from the city and has no, you know, has much more limited involvement, you know, happy to do that. But I'm, after a pretty thorough analysis of this project, I am, you know, I am, I'm in strong favor of the Wardwell property for the future of the city and, you know, and will do everything in my power to limit that cost to the taxpayer of Ellsworth as much as possible. We also, in 2027, when debt service on this would be, would be accruing, we decrease in debt service pretty substantially. Now, there's always an opportunity cost. If we were to fund the debt service on the full amount of this liability, that could be less or that, you know, we would use debt service on this project versus another project. However, there would effectively be minimal increase in the mill rates considering our debt service schedule as well.
Could I have one other comment?
Okay.
I am old enough to remember the city involvement with the Commerce Pack and the Business Pack, and I don't think that went that well. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to be next?
Woodwork and resident of Ellsworth. There's one fact that I keep not hearing about. What's the involvement of the Hancock County Commissioners on this?
I did give a brief overview of the developments on this project from the last six months or as long as I've known about it to the commissioners on their last commissioners' special meeting a few weeks back. I emailed them as well a couple of days ago, letting them know that this meeting was happening. They asked a couple of follow-up questions, said I sent them the memo, but said they probably would not be able to make it, they may be watching it. That's as far as I know.
Well, seeing that the courthouse was built, courthouse on it, and they took over partial of the courthouse for their commissioning projects, their sheriff department, all this stuff, they've kind of limited the size of the courthouse. Well, if they cannot expand their courthouse to benefit the courthouse, then I think the county commissioners should be involved with some type of value to this project. That's what I think. It shouldn't be just laying on Ellsworth. Matter of fact, all the Hancock County towns should be involved with this because they use it. If you charge each town a little bit of a fee, that would knock down the cost big time as well, since they benefit from it. So I'm just thinking so.
Thank you, Gordon. No, not just this, but on all the other projects, a thousand percent. I know John's already reached out to the county. I'll continue to pursue that avenue in addition, as we've talked about before. Already started talking about some conservation avenues for minimizing the costs here and, you know, I'm up for recontract in about two and a quarter years and I'm a very transparent person. And if we move forward in this, you're going to get a quarterly financial update on the cost of the road and the progress made there. And, you know, if, that'll probably be the biggest benchmark on which I'm judged on how that moves forward and how I'm able to bring, and not just myself, but this team is able to bring that cost down to make sure that the courthouse gets in the right place. And I'm willing to stake my reputation and my job on that.
Lisa LaRue, resident of Ellsworth and not in favor of the Surrey Road location. So my thought is that the Surrey Road may not be actually a suitable location for the courthouse. We know that they haven't done their due diligence on a lot of their engineering and it's very possible that they may find in the long run, that site doesn't work for them. There may be enough wetlands and stream encroachment, they can't perform their stormwater as they anticipated. So they could be in a pickle if they don't, if they continue to move forward with Surrey Road. Not to mention, there's no guarantee that they would meet the approval of the planning board and they may end up in, you know, legal appeals and whatnot if there's some testing of the approvals and the questions. So the Wardwell site actually provides a much more suitable location. It provides them larger acreage for the placement of their buildings, drainage, stormwater and expansion. And that's something that needs to be thought about. At Surrey Road, they're boxed in pretty tightly. It would seem the alternative site is the best site for the state. And it's interesting to me that they are unwilling at this time to commit some additional costs upfront to achieve the best long-term outcome. They should provide some of the funding to build the small section of road they're requiring the city to do. They must have anticipated costs at any building site to meet their needs because no site is 100% ready to go. They are trying to force the city to hand over a perfect location without some additional costs from them. And I know you've been pursuing it, but they should, in my opinion, they should have committed a little more since we've committed so much. So my thought is that they may force our to hand and the town may choose not to move forward with the road for the courthouse, but I think the town should still work with the Wardwells to acquire that land for the future of Ellsworth. We could certainly find other developers who would be more than happy to make the needed infrastructure improvements and the town could ensure that this, this land is now used for the best interests of the community, one way or another. I would suspect that shortly after the state performs their studies and plans, they will find that Surrey Road is either not suitable or financially daunting to continue pursuing. And by that time, it may be too late. The gem that they were offered may no longer be on the table for them. So their search for a build site will then have to continue into 2025 and their funding may wither up and blow away. But that shouldn't be our problem. They should be thankful that the city and its residents worked so hard to find an awesome location.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ed LaRue, Ellsworth resident. First of all, I just wanted to thank you for all your hard work. Obviously a daunting task. So I do believe that Surrey Road's a terrible location, not just because I live on that side of the bridge, which I know people already that tell me all the time that work in Bangor or work down in Bar Harbor, at Jackson, you know, some of the biggest employers in our state, that they won't live on this side of the bridge, that nobody wants to buy a house on this side of the bridge because you can't get across the bridge in the morning. So it would hurt us even more to have more traffic there. I think it's also, I agree with the man that nobody wants to pay more taxes. My taxes went up so much in the last couple of years, I couldn't even believe it, but, and I don't want to pay more. But I think it's also foolish to think that if you put this in the ready-made spot of Surrey Road, that it's not going to cost the town anything. I mean, like you said, you're looking at 100 years. You're talking about law offices coming in, people buying up single-family homes and turning them into offices, turning them into businesses. It's going to cost the town money, no matter where this thing goes. So to put it someplace where you can invest now and reap the benefits by higher tax values and stuff that's going to recoup those expenses, which I doubt you would recoup over on this side, I think is a tremendous idea. I'll kind of give you an analogy. My wife and I run an ATV club up north and you're always looking to get away with the least amount of expenses every year that the state will reimburse you for in order to take care of your trail system. Well, what we've discovered over the years is a big investment right now saves you a heck of a lot of money in the future and a lot of manpower, that you don't have to keep going back and making little fixes, little fixes, little fixes, when you can do the project right, get it done and be done with it. And it sounds like to me like that area is already in the plans to be developed. It looks like it's a great place. It looks like we'll recoup the money through tax revenues and stuff. So I'm 100% on board with going to Wardwell property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Sergeant Smith, property owner on the Surrey Road. I disagree a little bit that there won't be any city cost on the Surrey Road, should it ever get to that point, but I think we have a lot of legal finagling before it would ever get approved. But Jeremy Gray told me the city had promised them a sidewalk. That's expensive. We're going to need a turning lane. We're going to need additional lighting. We're going to need city water and sewer improved because water has broken in front of our house at least four times in the last couple of years. You've got stormwater that's going to need to be upgraded. You've got stormwater that's going to need to be upgraded. So I do think there's significant city funds that are going to be required on that side of town. So to think that Ellsworth isn't going to have an expenditure is, I think, a little bit naive. I swore I wouldn't get personal on this, but I'm going to. I had my house appraised twice this fall because I didn't believe the first one. The first question, other the appraiser's mouth, and she was from Manchester, Maine, was, where do you stand with the courthouse? And I said, well, we're fighting it, and we've got an alternative location. She says, it's still on their website. My appraisal was $100,000 less than it should have been because she appraised it like there was going to be a courthouse next door. I brought in another closer to the area appraiser. It did the same thing. So is the city prepared to lower all of our property values on that side of the town? Because that's what it's going to do to all of our values. So I think that's something that the city needs to take into consideration when they're voting. And this needs to be looked at as a fabulous economic development opportunity for this city. You, as a council, have the opportunity to start something fabulous by a thousand-foot road. I don't want to pay for it. I don't want my taxes to go up, but I'm willing to because I think, number one, in the two years, you'll find funding for it. But it's for the future. I won't see it. I'll be long gone, but it is for the future. It's for our children. It's for our children's children. So I would have you all think about that when you're making a vote. This is economic development for the city, and it's fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you, Terri. And I might follow up with you, too, on some of those pieces on, I think you're right on the sidewalk, too. I think the state had talked about extending the sidewalk. We might be able to consider that, you know, a cost they were previously going to bear with Surrey, and we'd definitely consider that. And then some of the other pieces, too. 100% of the stormwater and some of those other pieces, but that would be kind of part of the next steps, is they've committed to all those pieces. And I've already talked to council and others about really finalizing that and whatever final agreement we come to.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Ralph Jordan, Lisa LaRue. I'm against to being on Surrey Road because of the traffic. I think Merrill Lane is a fine place to put it. It's a great idea. I think a better idea would have been to put it where the courthouse is now, and I think that's still possible. But I just want to add one thing here as a cautionary note, and I'll tell you the reason I know this. My dad built that grain store up there in the 70s. And it may cost you $1.5 million to put a road in there, but take a drive behind LL Bean in their back parking lot and take a look at that 30-foot-high piece of ledge. Take a walk up the railroad track. See the ledge on both sides of that railroad track. Behind that bank, you're going to dig, if you decide to switch the road over to the left, behind that bank, probably three or four feet down, there's a giant chunk of cement that they used so much dynamite to take the top off them, you wouldn't believe it. The rest of the cement is still there because they couldn't get it out. That was a construction site. It was a big thing that they put in there for gravel and stuff like that, for screener gravel decades ago. I still think the Merrill Lane is the best place to put it, but when you're talking $1.5 million, you better be adding some more for dynamite. You may be able to get the road in there without dynamiting it, but you're not going to get that water line in there without dynamiting it. Thanks.
I should note, we do have, if I continue my long list, $261,000 for drilling and blasting. There was some ledge in the surveys pointed out. 261 is the estimate from the surveyors and engineers, to your very good point, sir. That could fluctuate, probably on the higher side. You know, we do have something built in here for contingency, too, on that final estimate. But again, a lot of those pieces, you know, if the DEP doesn't consider that spurnal pool of significance, and we'd want to shorten the road and make it straighter so it's easier to run pipe and to run electric without having to make these curves, we might...
You get a big piece of cement, so if you do that...
And that's the thing, but then if we decide to go straighter, and then we see there's a lot more ledge and there's other things, that even though it might be environmentally fine, we might still want to do the place we've already surveyed, we've already brought engineers to. We already know we'll pass muster with the DEP through permit within rule. And to your point, Lisa, as well, there's always, whether it's the Surrey or the Wardwell piece, you know, there's still process here with the DEP, with others. I think we've done, which is why the state's amenable to this land swap after an incredible amount of due diligence, is because they have the information that they feel that they have on Surrey and on Wardwell. And I take them at their word, that they'd go through the planning board process for either project and hold up to the highest standards of environmental concern, should they be pointed out at either the Surrey or the Wardwell property.
Penel Houghton, resident and live on the Surrey Road. What are my two points? One, is there anything in the development plan, the comprehensive plan, that limits what Wardwell can do with the Surrey Road property?
No, there's not. Although I would say, you know, there is interest in conservation in a lot of ways, but just like any property owner, they would, you know, have to apply by our rules and other regulations of just like anybody trying to develop in that zone.
But it is now listed as a neighborhood zone, right?
Yes.
With the new comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Versus a year in April, when the state bought the land, that wasn't clear that it was a dedicated neighborhood zone.
I think it is a neighborhood zone, but there's a special use. I know Tim went through a long legal explanation on, you know, whether the state can build a Surrey. We talked about that a lot. There is a special use exemption that they can invoke. I know we had a lot of conversation about that, but in this plan, or the latest comp plan, the future land use plan, that remains as a neighborhood zone. At the same time, that's not necessarily ratified by council. That's, you know, they have approved the plan. That is not a new area, but I think talking to folks that we'd like to remain a neighborhood zone, but...
If I may add to that, if that changes to a different zone, if Matt comes to us or the planning board comes to us and wants to change that zone, that goes through a public hearing process, multiple public hearing processes, actually.
Okay.
So it doesn't happen quickly at all.
Okay.
But we, the city, can't tell or direct Wardwell who's going to be the new property owner. We can't say what, there are no specific limits to their use of that property?
It's the limits within the neighborhood zone.
Okay.
That's what they...
Yeah, okay.
But with that overlay, right?
I'm sorry?
But with that overlay that we're talking about, that's why the courthouse would have been allowed there.
No, that's a governmental special use. That isn't, that's just governmental.
Okay.
Thank you. Questionable on whether the state would be allowed to.
Okay. And then separately, I mean, it sounds to me like the Wardwell property acquisition is a more known entity of costs. I'm sure there's going to be more costs to the city, and I'm sure, I mean, I just think that always happens, doesn't it, in development, is that there's going to be unknown costs that come up because of obstacles that are, you know, come upon. So, but it feels like with the work you've all done, and the state's put to it, and the understanding of this property, the Wardwell property, that it's really a much more known entity than the Surrey Road property is. It sounds to me. Surrey Road, they still don't have a lot of information done in the work of understanding how they can use that property. And I do agree with other people that there's very likely to be a lot of costs that get racked up on the Surrey Road location that we don't even yet know of, at least in this Wardwell location. We've got some delineated cost. So I don't know if I have a question or if it's sort of a comment. I feel like I'm a little, I'm feeling like we're a little naive to think that Surrey Road is going to be cost-free, and at least this is a known entity with a lot of future benefit, like you've outlined. So again, a kind of an investment on the part of the city that's only going to expand possibilities where Surrey Road is just an unknown. What's that going to do?
You know, and also, no, just on your, I don't have guarantees, especially with a land swap of this type, I wouldn't want to, you know, it basically would go, the Surrey Road property would go to the way it was before as a private landowner with the same rights that all private landowners have in that area. At the same time, I have, you know, the Wardwells have been very amenable in this whole part of the process, both in the rights of first refusal on the remaining property. They are a large landowner in this entire region. You know, they really want to help do what's right for Ellsworth in this piece, and we have had initial conversations about potentially conservancies coming in there. That could be for the Surrey Road property, but that's, you know, really a second stage. But I feel like that will be a big thrust of this, if we were to move forward with, you know, bringing in Frenchman Bay Conservancy or another conservancy to, you know, to develop not just this parcel for Card Brook to make its environment, but, you know, there's a variety of other wetlands and conservations in this parcel for Card Brook that we want to kind of protect forever, other opportunities that maybe we can protect land in Ellsworth, you know, that's in more of our sprawl areas, protect land that's, as we grow in our more urban zones, so that, you know, we're going to have to grow more dense, and that's more environmentally friendly, and we still need to build houses, but then also doing it in the right way. They've been very amenable to those conversations, and I'd hope to, shortly thereafter, have a lot more positive progress there, too.
Thank you.
Leslie Harlow, resident of Ellsworth. I want to echo Patrick Lyons' comments. I think this is a great opportunity for Ellsworth to really have, like, a generational nudge. And I've lived here most of my life, and I've watched the evolution of what I think of as kind of just random hobnob developments where, you know, somebody was fortunate to be able to buy the land, to develop it, the city had to put some roads in, but it wasn't with an overview. And considering that, I think all of us in this room can agree, that we really need to buckle down, and all municipalities in Maine, everywhere, are doing it, costs, the future, energy, economic, you name it. We're kind of all dealing with the same stuff. And we're very unique. We are unlike any other town in the state of Maine because we're a town of 9,000 people, but in the summer, 5 million people manage to drive through this place. And we somehow have not figured out how to really make that work to our benefit. And I think that this project that's being proposed in a part of town that could become more evolved as part of the urban, compact urban core is a very unique opportunity. I live on Beale's Avenue. I've watched the whole progress with the planned community at the end of our road. I've thought, wow, I mean, that's the beginning of, you think about that, and now you think about the Washington Junction Road, and now you think about over by Acadia Village. I mean, all this stuff starts making a lot of sense. I ride my bicycle a lot, and I ride it on the Down East Trail, so I've been able to feel like what that's really about, where right, like, half a mile from my house is a beautiful wetland area. I understand that's part of the challenge of this development, but when we look at other communities like Falmouth, Scarborough, Yarmouth, Bethel, places that have a main thoroughfare, which is Route 1 or Route 2 or whatever, and they've had to basically come to the forefront with a new way to think about developing their towns. So the models are already there for us. Obviously, the economics of this play a huge role. You know, we're all taxpayers. We all hate paying taxes. I get it. I mean, we don't hate paying taxes. We just elevate the taxes. But the benefit that I think, and I own a couple of businesses, I know what it's like to take a risk. I know what it's like to make wrong decisions. I also know what it's like to make the right decision, but it all involves risk. And I think that we, right now, have an opportunity, as like a generational nudge, I'm going to call it, to really kind of look at the future of Ellsworth and look at this in a very different way. And I really appreciate all the time that's been put into this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I just say that I love that we have created the term generational nudge?
I know.
It's a great term.
Yeah.
I wrote it down.
Yeah.
Mary Blackstone, resident of Ellsworth. I'm interested to hear more about the Card Brook watershed from an environmental perspective. Charlie, you've mentioned that you've been talking with Frenchman Bay Conservancy and intend to include conservation in this process. Currently, Card Brook watershed, and Card Brook in particular, where it basically connects with the area that's about to be developed, becomes an urban impaired stream. So the primary, from the DEP's standpoint, the primary reason for that impairment is impervious surface and the stormwater drainage into the Card Brook. Anybody who travels across the bridge down on Water Street, across Card Brook, when there's some sort of water event, sees that the water looks like chocolate milk. So that's something that needs to be addressed by the city. It's something that's been recognized historically as something that needs to be addressed. So it seems to me, I had not anticipated that when we talk about densification in the city, that that would take place in the Card Brook watershed. So I need to hear something about how this is going to be mitigated, the Card Brook situation.
Absolutely. And I pulled up the full environmental survey. I think it's one of the difficult things we all face with development, right, which is, we need to build to give people affordable housing, and it's incredibly, I mean, it's really one of my number-one goals. I also love this wilderness, a registered Maine guide. There's something, that's why I'm in Maine. There is something so special about what we have here. But those two pieces are often in conflict with each other. To build cheap, you know, you can go to Texas and Arizona, I'm not saying we should become those, and developers are going there and building a lot cheaper. And a lot of it has to come with some of these regulatory pieces. How do you balance that piece in a way that's smart, that makes sense, that we really can balance those two together? And I think reading the comp plan and the housing needs assessment, I mean, it calls for it again and again, to protect and preserve, principle two, the natural environment and rural lifestyle, and encourage sustainable and resilient growth. And one of the key points there is the support efforts outline this plan, the city should look to areas to expand water and sewer infrastructure to better support growth in the city's urban core. Official capital planning will be important to help ensure the infrastructure is properly maintained, et cetera. And over and over again, it's, we're seeing a lot of sprawl because it's cheaper to build out there. It's, you know, that you can be away from these pieces of the infrastructure, and what we really need to do is figure out ways to make it more in our urban core, which this is it. In Card Brook, so if you look at the full wetland maps here, you know, the courthouse area would be, you know, a fairly small. One of the things about this is, you know, all of this upland to this line could potentially be developed if this doesn't become a courthouse. And, you know, there might be actually a pretty decent argument to make, if we don't move forward with the courthouse here, that we should try to put every square inch of upland that's not wetland, you know, with the, going through every single DEP process as required by law, to make housing affordable and to develop in our urban core. And that's, to me, in many ways, this courthouse allows, especially this piece of this important part of the, you know, Card Brook, once you cross here, it's a rough sledding on its way, you know, back to the ocean, or to the ocean. So this would really help in that piece. And then the other kind of trade-off here as well, and for future, which is throughout this entire piece, is how do we conserve land exterior to our urban core and develop in our urban core so that, you know, which, again, if we can have zero environmental impact and there was none of these near our urban core, that would be great. The second piece is, yeah, I should also mention that, you know, we've had some very initial conversations with Frenchman's Bay. You know, it would be, I'm not saying that they're agreeing to conserve this area or changing that, it's something the Wardwells would be interested in. I think the Frenchman Bay, if they can look towards a future conservation effort and bring them into the partnership here on how do we best preserve this? And when we look towards, you know, developing this full area in our urban core as well, you can see where the wetlands are in this kind of Card Brook watershed. You can see where they kind of come across each part of this parcel. And I would really like to bring them into that conversation, they're experts in this area, on, you know, what would be most important to protect, what would be most important to limit impervious service, to make sure we don't have water runoff into the Card Brook, but also knowing that we really have a housing crisis here, and we need to put it in our urban core.
If I can follow up on that. Mary, I'm watching the expression on your face while Charlie is speaking, and I don't know if anybody from Frenchman Bay Conservancy is here, so I'm not... know if anybody from Frenchman's Bay Conservancy is here, so I'm not speaking for them, I'm not seeing any hands raised, but knowing that those conversations are in there, this isn't a decision to sacrifice Card Brook in order to do this, that there are the setbacks that are required. But if Frenchman's Bay, as the conversations continue, and there is talk of them, you know, putting some money in as conservation, there's no reason for them to conserve what already can't be developed because of law. It would be conserving more and having recreation areas and having more wildlife areas beyond what's required by law. So we're not talking about we're willing to sacrifice Card Brook and only go with the minimum setbacks, even though as Charlie was pointing out, that's what's possible, that because there have been conversations with Frenchman's Bay, and again, I'm not speaking for them, there's the ideas of being able to make conservation a part of what we're doing with the Wardwell property beyond what's required by law. So it's not, I was just watching you and concerned that what you might have been hearing was we're going to sacrifice Card Brook because we have to, and that's not the case. We've talked about going along the Down East Trail, I've ridden my bike there and it's extraordinary to watch, how many heron nests are there? There are a significant number of them, it's extraordinary to drive, to be this close to town. It's a special area that I think can be protected while we're working on doing exactly this. And then, who knows what the potential is, but then the Wardwells would own the Surrey property with frontage on Union River and being able to bring Frenchman's Bay Conservancy into those conversations as well. On the state level, what I have found interesting over fewer than the last five years, but call it that, that land conservation groups are saying we need to be part of the solution for housing, that they used to do only conservation for conservation's sake and for wildlife. And then they realized, actually, our mission should be broader and it should be about people having access to these areas. And now conservation groups are saying there's a housing crisis for people and while we're looking at what makes sense to conserve for different uses, we do need to look at what land we might have that makes sense for development. And we've seen Frenchman's Bay's done a little bit of that. So it's a really interesting, I think, evolution where conservation is still at their core, but realizing that the uses of those lands have evolved as society has evolved. So that's all part of these conversations about the value of Card Brook as a conservation area for wildlife, for recreation for people, and not simply building as much as we can, as close to it as we can because we can.
And I think, to your point, sorry, just one last, I think this also gives us the opportunity to have some direction on how that's done. With the rights of first refusal, with this courthouse, and the opposite scenario, and if we weren't engaged in these things, you know, I would love to bring Frenchman's Bay Conservancy or others on how to develop this smartly, how to protect this watershed. If not, they have to follow the DEP rules and there's, you know, Academy Village Resort is right on Card Brook. And that would be, you know, if we don't pursue more of a, you know, a partnership-type planning effort between the city and the private landowners and conservation efforts to do, you know, urban zone residential development the right way that, you know, can balance the needs of Card Brook and the watershed, but also the needs of housing in our urban core. You know, this could be, I think, to one person's comment on, it'll just be, I think, Leslie, I'm just developed here there, you know, we don't have any control over that. It could be right along this entire area as long as they get the DEP approvals, there's no potential rental pools in this area, so this is a pretty significant setback by design from Card Brook as opposed to potentially, you know, much denser housing developments.
And I really appreciate the extent to which you're thinking broadly to include conservation, residential, and this other courthouse development. I just remind you that the DEPs, if you go to the DEP website and the Card Brook section, the first mechanism that they have to amend the impaired status of Card Brook is reducing, addressing the impervious surface. And so that's the existing impervious surface. And now we're talking about putting more impervious surface, not just the courthouse, but at least two other developments in the Card Brook watershed. That's going to increase the amount of impervious surface, no question. And so that is certainly directly in contravention with what the DEP is saying about how Card Brook's impaired status can be amended. So that's my first observation there. And then, to some degree, this development is, I think people are excited about it because it has the potential for economic development in that area. And that's wonderful if it happens. But I also want to point out the DEP rules are going to be changing with respect to wetlands and small streams. So they are currently working on legislation to radically change the rules. So what currently exists is, as far as rulemaking, is changing. And the extent to which this really is an economic boon for Ellsworth and the extent to which further development is going to be possible here is up for question. The legislation is not in a position to be reviewed. I simply know from having talked with Wendy Garland recently that those changes are coming.
You have to be minutes, I'm sorry, Mary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Along these same lines.
Oops, can you state your name?
Doug Smith, resident of Ellsworth. I lived, grew up in that White House on Water Street. 64 years ago, we moved out. And this is, the house is down by the bridge. And that water was brown 64 years ago. So I just want to make sure that people don't think that, you know, in four or five years from now, if this was approved, that people would say, look what they did to our, look what they did to our Brook. When in fact, it's been, it's been imperviously brown for decades.
John Lunnahan, Ellsworth resident. Great presentation. I like the Wardwell property. I don't have any problem with the other property or the moratorium. I only have one concern that I ask the council to consider. What is the impact? You talk about economic development, the economic development I'm concerned about is the property taxes here in the city of Ellsworth. So I only ask you as the councils to make that one concern, what will either one of these things do for our local residents and our property taxes? If there's any increase involved with any one of them, I would hope that you would vote no on them. Not that they're not good projects, but can we afford them? An economic development to me starts with local property taxes, starts with my wallet and the citizens of Ellsworth. So I encourage you to take a strong look at it from an economic standpoint. Great project, well presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My wife told me I had to come up here and talk soon. Eric Mariag, full disclosure, I live off of the Surrey Road. I have, what I'm going to say is not going to go against the Surrey Road option, although I prefer it not to be the Surrey Road option. Living on the Surrey Road, we do have the privilege of not having to worry about the bridge traffic, but if the courthouse goes on the, we all know that if the courthouse goes on the Surrey Road, it's going to mess with everybody's traffic. However, anyone that's driven on High Street between 3:30 PM and 6:00 PM in the summer understands that the traffic might actually be worse there than it is on the bridge. Is there any, and I would assume that with the courthouse, it might actually get worse. Is there a plan in place for reducing the amount of traffic or, you know, potentially, you know, I don't know. Anyway, something to consider. Something else to consider, so I am also a Jax employee and I work with a group, I don't know if, you know, there's a group at Jax that's moving to Gainesville, right? I'm a member of that group. Luckily, we are not moving because I found a different job. But one of the reasons the group is moving is because we can't get people to move here because they can't afford to live here. There is no housing, there is no nothing. And these are people that make, you know, middle class, upper class, depending on how you look at class, but that's a lost opportunity for Ellsworth, right? So we are lucky that we are in a position where we can afford a house, we didn't have to rent. We considered Bar Harbor, we couldn't live there because we, as Ed and Lisa know, we have three extremely large dogs and could not afford to live there with those dogs. But not everybody is in that position, right? So I guess, you know, this whole thing is like, yes, I do have a concern about the traffic. Granted, there will be traffic issues with the bridge, which might actually be worse. But on the other hand, I am in favor of the alternative property because I think that it might provide an opportunity for a growth that may benefit both Jax and Ellsworth at the same time.
Yeah, on the traffic piece, I think, I know I've talked to the state, they would, you'd do a traffic study if they were to move forward on the Surrey Road piece, they would also do the same and that would be at their expense on the High Street, that would be the next piece. I don't, yeah, I don't need to tell the folks here about the traffic issues on all pieces here. You know, this is kind of the Beals Avenue where people are using as kind of a bypass already, they're spilling out down to Water Street.
That's not any better on Water Street.
Yeah, it's just, everybody's looking to go different than High Street.
And then they go Franklin Street.
Yeah, and, you know, it's the Wild West out there, it's fun on three to six. And Nancy and I, we actually have been talked about this too, on like, you know, that, one of the potentials here is, you know, could we create a bypass? And that's one of the avenues, you know.
No pun.
What's that?
No pun intended.
No pun intended.
One of the avenues.
Or a spur. And, you know, we've talked to the Maine DOT, you know, if it's just to the courthouse, that's probably not an MPI-level funding, but maybe they'll upgrade the intersection, that could help with traffic, which is a better intersection at that piece going here, but the traffic study would have to say what that would be. And, you know, Nancy and I, there could be a great argument, this could help reduce traffic, an engineer could say that could increase traffic, especially if you add fair amount of housing here, but there's, these are the types of things that we'll need to start balancing. And, you know, so that, the traffic, could we make this a TIF district to kind of shelter some of the tax increases and have that money be, you know, used for additional affordable housing while at the same time making it more attractive for residential developers for middle income, low income housing potentially in this area while at the same time, you know, really acknowledging this wetlands in Card Brook and how to develop this whole area. Now, again, that's sort of stage two. The initial is going to be laser focused on the courthouse piece, but, you know, this, I think there's so many pieces of the comp plan and the housing needs assessment that this could also start addressing, you know, as a community, I think could be really helpful.
For the cost of that, I mean, would it be on our dime or would the state, I mean, I know you kind of touched at it, but, you know, to do something to quell the traffic a little bit, would that be our responsibility or?
Well, they're looking at the state right now on the High Street corridor and they're doing kind of a traffic engineering plan, not just for Ellsworth, but as it goes down. You know, for the, for the full bypass road, if we were to do that, that would be something we'd really want the state to take the lion's share of. It could be a federal piece to it, you know, especially, you know, when it comes to housing development and building in our urban core, that meets the state's goals, too. They have a big housing goal that they want to meet. The city piece, which we'd still be looking for some state funding and additional resources, would really just be that smaller piece, but I can say with a fair degree of confidence that this, if we were to do something of this magnitude, it would be hopefully mostly a state-run project, so.
Thank you.
Can I, can I add two points just quickly to answer the question that you had raised? I think, again, looking right now, focusing just on the courthouse, there is potential for something larger and if we do it right, it's phenomenal, if we don't do it right, it's not. So it's a piece that's factored in there, but what is happening beginning this year is a partnership with US Department of Transportation and Maine Department of Transportation through a grant that Janet Richards was able to bring in for Thriving Communities, which is going to look at what's going on in High Street. That it is marginally functional and incredibly unpleasant most of the time, and we all experience that. I love that those stores and those things are there and close, but driving to them can be frightening and I would never walk or ride my bike and there are people who need to and it's tough. So there is something in the works now, this year, probably into next year, I'm looking at Matt, but it's going to.
Two and a half.
Two and a half years to look at how do we manage the functionality of High Street? And it's, what I love about it is it's looking at the land use and the traffic patterns because sometimes we think about one without the other. But the whole intent of that project is to look at the functionality of High Street and the fact that that will be happening while this is developing means that we can have that as part of the conversation as well. So I'm encouraged that that's coming and the timing is helpful for us as we're looking at the decision we're going to make tonight.
Yeah, and Matt and Janet have done some incredible planning on that to line this up. I think, could be wrong, Matt can correct me, but I think it's a $30 million grant opportunity and it's still in the planning stage, too. So we're reimagining the High Street corridor, this would be a good time to maybe use some of the initial funding to how do we design this in a smart way, in a way that meets our goals. I mean, this zoom out picture I think is really interesting on, you can see the kind of three quadrants that have been built for Ellsworth. This seems to be a natural fit for the fourth, to keep our, not encouraged sprawl, to keep our neighborhoods walkable, to have, start to turn the corner on that 7% reduction enrollment in the schools, you know, to keep people living here year-round so they can be at our, I went to Bar Harbor recently and it's just like a ghost town. And I come to Ellsworth and there's activity and there's excitement and I'm here, even when I'm not working, a lot of the weekends, going to the Grand and going to restaurants and, you know, that's for the next generation, we want to make sure we keep that. And I think this quadrant is going to be a big piece, courthouse or not, is how we do board there.
I was supposed to make that comment as well, that Bar Harbor is a ghost town for people that work at Jax, right? So they need to be able to, they should be able to come here and it's a little more convenient if they live here, you know, so. Yeah, Bar Harbor, you're right, ghost town in the winter.
No offense.
Thank you.
Dale Hamilton, resident. My wife doesn't know I'm here.
She does now.
She does now.
She will find out.
Somebody's texted her.
Where is she? So first of all, I know for all of you, you were elected for a reason, and that's to make decisions like this, so I hope my comments will just give you something to think about as you're discussing and making your ultimate decision. I think, a couple of points, I do think that there's an opportunity for development, for housing, however, realistically, there's a lot of other work that needs to be done to make that to lower prices. It isn't going to be just acquiring this land is magically going to create opportunity and is going to create affordable housing. That doesn't happen without addressing a lot of other issues that I think that the council will have to take on if that's really going to materialize. So I think in thinking about this, it's also being realistic about what we're talking about. Couple of other things that I think are realistic, you talk about the debt service. What that means is something else that is due, that we need to purchase as a city, is going to be given up as a result of taking on this project. So this project is not in isolation to everything else. You have a better handle on what those needs are, you know, three years, four years, five years out. So when you look at that in terms of what other equipment purchases that need to be made by the city, recognize that when we take on this debt, it means something else is going to go or we're going to increase taxes. That's a reality, so I think there should be some discussion and acknowledgement about that reality. The other thing is, I don't think that there's only three choices here. I don't think the Surrey Road is the best location, I think this is the best location. And in terms of having some stake into it, in terms of the economic opportunity, that's great, it doesn't always play out. You talk about Myrick Street, that has not played out the way that we would have liked it to have played out over the years. So some of it's speculation in terms of what will be. With that said, I would encourage the council that if you're going in the direction of authorizing the purchase or authorizing this expense, that you consider authorizing up to and directing the city manager to conduct further negotiations with the state. The state shouldn't be saying that's 100% on Ellsworth to do this. They're not, they're not taking on anything by moving this location, but the reality is this is a better fit for everyone. So they should have some stake in the game and that negotiation should be there. So maybe we contribute half of the funding and you go back and say, you contribute the rest. Senator Rohauske could be advocating for the funding for the state as opposed for the city. So those are just some things that I would throw out for consideration as you talk about it. Thanks.
100% agree.
100. Anyone else?
Anyone else? Last chance? We don't want to shut anybody off? All right. The public hearing is closed. Council.
I'll have other points to make for this discussion, but before we get started and all that, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out. The neighborhood crew from Surrey Road initially put this on our radar, it was, I hadn't heard of it until the, the group came to us with their concerns, and they're very valid concerns, and I think that created this discussion, this potential opportunity for the city. But also, just everyone for, for being here. Gordon mentioned the commission, and I've been in contact with them over the last couple of months trying to increase communication between the city and the commission. And I'll say that there are very few people that go and speak during public comments, and I think that we would all do well as a, as a county to have more folks go to the commission as well. A lot of our taxes go to the county, and there are partnerships we could continue to work on with them, but that, that starts with, with us and with, with you all. So again, thanks for all the incredible comments and thoughts and advice. I, for one, and I'm sure the rest of the council will take this all into consideration during our conversation here.
What is your wishes? What are your wishes?
Well, I would, the city manager's drafted a proposed motion, which is multi-piece. I think it would maybe, Chair would benefit, I'd like to move that the city advance the motion to move toward, with the alternative site at the Wardwell property.
Do you want to read that motion?
I'd be happy to read the motion to do that.
It's very long, switch it up.
I'll warm up.
There you go.
Oh, motion.
What's what page it's on?
It is on this page, there's no number.
Five or six. So one, two, sorry, three, four, five, six, seven.
Thank you.
So, "Whereas the city of Ellsworth recognizes the need for a new courthouse facility and supports a state-city partnership to achieve this goal, whereas an alternative location for the courthouse has been identified better serve the needs of the community and judicial system, the city hereby moves to, one, authorize the city manager to facilitate a land swap agreement between Alice Wardwell and the State of Maine Judicial Bond Council for 17.9 acre parcel off of High Street, street number not yet assigned, tax map 21, lot 15, in exchange for a 17.9 acre parcel owned by the State of Maine at 120 Surrey Road for the State of Maine Judiciary to construct a new courthouse facility on the Wardwell property. Two, instruct the city manager to negotiate and execute an easement purchase agreement with the Adams and Merrill property owners for parcels off of High Street, Adams, map 131 lot 73, Merrill, map 131 lot 40, and map 131 lot 41, funded through the local road account. These funds are to be allocated for the purpose of constructing a roadway connecting High Street to the proposed courthouse facility on the Wardwell property. Three, authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with the State of Maine Judicial Branch. The contract shall define the standards and timelines by which the city will fulfill its obligation to construct a road to the proposed courthouse facility, courthouse facility, not to exceed 1.5 million in city-issued bond anticipation notes or bond funds. Four, instruct the city manager to actively pursue state, federal, and all other funding opportunities to reduce the financial burden on the city for road development. This effort shall include proposed zoning and land use modifications aimed at spurring housing and economic development and generating new tax and fee revenue from road and utility usage in the city's urban core growth area. The city manager shall provide a funding report on the city road project quarterly until the project closes. Five, direct the city manager to pursue a rights-averse refusal agreement on the remaining Wardwell properties off of High Street, tax map 21, lot 15, considering potential, A, conservation easements, B, developer partnerships, and C, state and federal road and infrastructure improvement programs. Effective date this motion shall take effect immediately upon passage."
Excellent. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Counsel Smith?
Thank you, I just wanna, I planned to, I, I came in, still with an inquisitive mind, eager to hear from people tonight, and I appreciate those who spoke and the turnout. What has struck me tonight is the concerns, the public opposition early on to Surrey Road was about quality of life and the appropriateness of directing growth to Surrey Road. The opposition to Wardwell property is the cost of the access road, they're very different concerns. There seems to be a sense that Wardwell is the right property for this, and I agree with that sense, it's just a kicker that there's a significant cost to it. But what I've heard tonight is, I think, an affirmation of those two perspectives and the fact that we have avenues we can still pursue to bring down that cost.
No pun intended.
Thank you, it really, it just, it flows naturally, it's true. And the key here is to take that long-term approach, and again, this generational nudge, that what we decide tonight will nudge where development happens, if it happens, how and if Ellsworth grows. When, when, you know, in my day job, we talk about change is coming, and one of the values that you have in engaging at the local level is determining how that change is gonna happen, rather than having it done to you that we can step in and say, "This is how change is gonna happen in our town." And when you look at, if it's up to 1.5 million dollars, and I trust Charlie is gonna continue to badger other opportunities for lowering those costs, dividing it by the number of people by 100 years, because that's about how long we can expect this to be a courthouse, and then there's reuse that happens all the time, it seems like a smart investment, even though it's a lot of money. So I'll be supporting this. The other related issue that has come up a couple of times, frustration, why isn't the county paying for it? And it's, well, it's actually a state thing, even though it's a county courthouse. But there isn't yet a great mechanism for a community that's a service center, which Ellsworth is, and the county seat, to have the communities that benefit from those services help pay for them. We deal with it when we have people at risk who need services, we deal with it with courthouse. There, there isn't yet, there have been ideas that go through the state legislature, and none of them have passed successfully. But I think that's like another conversation to have with our representation in, in the legislature about how we manage the fact that we are a service center and the county seat, we absorb the costs unfairly that come with that. So that can be ongoing as we, as we look at how to move forward. But I think this is an opportunity to nudge growth for the next generation or two in a direction that makes sense for Ellsworth, and so I'll be voting in support of the pending motion. And based on conversations we heard tonight, I think really affirm that for me. Thank you.
If I might add, I'm the same way, in fact, I was talking to Counsel LaMote, I just, I wasn't sure, there was just some, I knew all of this information, but I didn't have the aspect from the public. So again, thank you, everyone, for, for coming out and talking with us. And pros and cons, I mean, they're both needed when you're making a decision like this. But as I sit here and as I've listened to everybody, and especially, I love that term generational nudge, you know, there's, there are a lot of things that the city has done where we have put money into conservation projects for recreation, and I know Myrick Street isn't the most populous street, but we did get our money back for that, and we have an area that can be developed. The business park is fully built out, and we're receiving tax dollars from that business park, and will for years and years and years. And the biggest one is the, the Branch Lake, that conservation effort that, that we did on the lower end, and we were able to bring recreation to Ellsworth, and at the same time, save our water supply, and then, and now we're actually adding on to that and adding on trails, and that was, at that time, over a million dollars for that project. So the, the city has a history of doing these things, and helping development, and, and giving nudges, and so I too, I think I'm going to, to, you know, vote yes on this motion for those reasons. I think it's, it's the best thing for the future of Ellsworth. If we don't grow, our taxes are gonna go up because the costs go up, inflation, and if we don't have increased, an increased tax base, our tax, we're gonna pay the, the difference of those costs, and there's not gonna be any new growth to help us, so. Can I go with you, Nancy? Any further discussion? Counsel Helen, I knew you were gonna be last.
Well, first of all, the, the Surrey Road location is less than optimal, and I understand that. And I sat in on a meeting, the first meeting, I think, with Matt and the Wardwell family, and I said at that meeting that no matter what happens, some good is gonna come out of this process. And, and I think some good is gonna come out of this process. However, I will be voting against this, and here is why. I think to commit city staff to build development projects is a mistake. I think that this development should be for private enterprise and not government. I know that's not a popular subject in this room, but I don't believe the city needs to be in the development business. I think the city can grow by lowering the barriers and treating people coming to the city better than they do. This project is gonna happen, whether the city does it or someone watching tonight, a private developer, latches a hold of this property and moves forward. And there's no guarantee, there's nobody here from the state tonight that I can see, there's nobody here from the county tonight that I can see. And there's no guarantee that the state is gonna go forward with this if this passes. And I think it's gonna pass, and, and I, I support everybody's decision to pass, but in my world, development needs to be left to the private sector, and the city needs to lower the barriers to developers.
Thank you. Anyone else ready to vote? Okay. Motion, second? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you all. Good to work. Thank you for those comments.
We need to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All those in favor?